For a bit, we have consent agenda and some department head reports to deal with before we get to the Board of Health portion of this. You're welcome to stay on and observe and listen, and then when we get to the Board of Health, we're scheduled on the agenda. So at this point, the adoption of the agenda, we need a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda. Are there any corrections, deletions, or changes to that agenda?
I don't have anything, so I would move that we adopt it.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, motion is second, and objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is the approval of minutes from previous meeting. Have you had a chance to review those minutes and make your comment?
I didn't make corrections, sent them in.
Thank you.
I'd move that we adopt the previous minutes with corrections.
Okay, thank you. Second to that?
Second.
Yes.
I would like to clarify that what you are approving are the final minutes of April and the first approval of May 4th and May 13th for the record.
So we're approving the final minutes of April, May 4th and May 13th, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that is the motion unless somebody changes it. Motion and a second. Any other discussion or objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are now in the public comment period. This is when the public can comment. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and there will be no decisions made during this comment period. So I'm going to open it up. A little difficult on Zoom to recognize the speakers, so if everybody will just show courtesy, but you're more than welcome to make your comment.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Laura.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and I know the Board of Health part is going to happen later, but since we are in public comments, yeah, I just want to make, guess make my concern known about the firing of Emily Brown as our Public Health Director. And I would also, well, I would like to know that due diligence is done. I understand there's going to be a lot of privacy issues regarding anybody's firing. I also would like to know if our public health community in the Valley, there's the San Luis Valley Public Health Organization. Yeah, I'd be also interested in knowing what they thought of the firing. It was my understanding that she did a good job, and from what I saw, you know, and I wasn't a commissioner, but from what I saw during the pandemic, as far as her writings and communication with the community, I thought she did a fine job. And I was quite distraught, as I know I talked to John, and I really appreciate you calling me the other morning when I emailed. Yeah, just really worried about her firing. I understand we have somebody in there now, which hopefully is competent. I'm glad he's worked with the Health Department before. And I would also like to know, I know in February, there was a discussion about the communities in the Valley, South Fork, Monta, and Del Norte, not having taken that representation off the board. And I noticed in the email or the website this morning that there isn't, it's just you guys, the commissioners that are on the Board of House, whereas it used to be the town representative. And so, yeah, I guess I would just like to know that our towns were consulted and our public health officials were consulted and that they agreed with this decision, because I trust them much more than I trust our commissioners when it comes to public health decisions in the San Luis Valley. That's it.
Thank you, Laura.
Excuse me.
To get back in, back and forth on these comments right now, what we can do is address them during that portion of the meeting. If you have asked you to stay on.
I will.
Just, just for time efficiency here, but we have noted your comments. Thank you, Laura, for taking your time.
Excuse me, can we have everybody state their name and spell it minutes? Have it correct?
Yep, Laura Conchelos, L-A-U-R-A, and then C-O-N-C-H-E-L-O-S, and I'm in Montavista.
Thank you.
Looks to me like you're at work right now, Laura, is that correct?
No, I'm hanging in the backyard.
Nice looking, very nice, good background. Okay, I assume there may be some other comments?
This is Liza Maron. I'm calling in from Swatch, and I am a Swatch County resident. I am the Director of the San Luis Valley Local Foods Coalition and have done extensive work with Emily Brown on farm-to-table work, our Montavista Farmers Market presence, and work with her, with the Rocky Mountain Farmers Union. And she's just been the most professional and respected public health official. And so I just wanted to voice my concern. We have a big outbreak in center that crosses into the Rio Grande County line of COVID and into Tierra and Nueva Housing and more. I just feel really concerned that we don't have that experience, public health presence, leadership in Rio Grande County. I'm not aware of the new person, but I'm very distraught about the firing of Emily Brown. She's been there for years and done really an amazing job and is highly respected across the state and in the Valley. So I think it was a mistake.
Thank you, Lisa, for your comments. And I didn't know you were active in Farmers Union. I used to be the county president down here several years ago.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
That was Liza Maron, M-A-R-R-O-N.
Thank you. And I'll try to be a little bit more diligent on getting your names. Okay. Are there other comments from the public at this point?
This is Courtney Hurst, C-O-U-R-T-N-E-Y-H-U-R-S-T. Unfortunately, I can't seem to get my video to work right now, so I don't know if you guys can see me. I'm a resident of Del Norte, and I would like to echo all the concerns that the previous two public members have made. I know Emily Brown on a personal level, but I have also had a chance to witness her in a professional capacity. And without some sort of evidence that there was some wrongdoing, negligence, breaking of regulations, I am deeply disturbed by the removal of her. I feel like she has made the hard decisions to keep us safe during this pandemic, and I am very perplexed why her removal was necessary without further information. So I too would like to know what other health officials were consulted during this time, because it, based on the information I have, it makes no sense to me, and I'm deeply upset by the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Others? Are there any other comments from the public on this or other matters? It's not limited to the public health concerns right now.
Hi, my name is Eva Timberlake. Eva, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to also say, I wanted to know what health officials and people in the community and the health profession were told about this, or at least, did they talk to anybody in the health, hospitals, emergency, anything? So I'd like that information.
We'll talk, we'll address that specifically when we get to that, but short answer right now, others were consulted. This was not done in isolation. And
Okay, that's wonderful.
Obviously, part of our, the county is constrained on what they can say in a personnel matter, but there are some things that were discussed in public meetings that we can discuss at a later point, if that's okay. And I'm perfectly willing to talk to you personally, or others will be willing to also on the commission.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eva. And if you can, I see you dead-wait on chat. If you can give us some contact information on this so we can get back.
I called and emailed yesterday and gave that information. I'm still waiting.
Thank you. I haven't seen that personally, but, okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, are there any others?
I have a comment. My name is Candace Allen, A-L-L-E-N, and I just would like to speak to the professionalism of Emily Brown. She was an integral part of Rio Grande Hospital's communication link with Incident Command. And had we not had her in her role, integrating, communicating, and sharing information with us from Incident Command, we would have been by far out of the loop. And we really appreciated her involvement and couldn't have done what we were doing without her. And we would just like that to be noted. So.
Thank you, Candace. Thank you very much. Are there other comments? From the public? I don't see anybody popping up there. So if this is all on that, on the public comment period, we will move on to the consented agenda. Again, those of you who are concerned about the public health issues, please stay on to that part of the agenda, if you would, please. Thank you. The consent agenda, I would ask commissioners and also the administrator, are there any issues or concerns with anything on the consent agenda?
There is not for me.
I have one on the accounts payable, and that has to do with stipends. Trish, can you elaborate on that just a little bit?
There are a number of stipends on that AP report that I believe need to be reclassified. They are not actually stipends. So we, we definitely, I'm going to put together a sit-down to go over and make sure that they qualify within the grants. And either go ahead and if they do qualify as stipends, or we'll have to rename them, put them in a new line item. The practice of Rio Grande County and the use of stipends has not been proper, and most of the stipends do not fall into actual legal stipends. So we need to look at reclassifying them.
Okay, thank you. And what part of, is that across county departments, or is that narrowed down to one department?
It is down to one department. The group that is on this AP is for Public Health.
Okay, thank you. So we have concerns there. Do you have a recommendation on how we handle that today?
We're just not going to go ahead and, we can put those aside. They will be processed. And after review, I do have plans to sit down with one of the public health ladies who deal with all the grants, where she can look at the grants and tell me if stipends actually fall within them.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
The other commissioners have any comments on the consent agenda at this point, or thoughts on this particular stipends issue?
Other than the stipends issue, I was, I'm and I think we do need to check on them and see.
Thank you. Commissioner Glover, do you have comments on this?
Yeah, I agree. I think other than the stipends issue, I think, I think we need to get a direct answer on that, and everybody kind of needs to know where that is. I know that we use stipends in several areas, but that seems to be the one we can't explain. So Suzanne, did you, I'm sorry.
I would, I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
With the exception of the stipends?
Yes.
Okay. And I heard a second on that. Any further discussion or objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda stands approved as modified. Moving on to county official and department head reports, the first one on the agenda is from the Department of Social Services.
Good morning, John. This is Jody. So I have, good morning, just a couple of things for the board. As you guys know, pretty much everything in my department is kind of on hold in lieu of what the legislators decide on the budget. I did hear this morning that the long bill is moving through the House, and hopefully on Saturday it will get adopted, or not adopted, but approved, and moved on to the Senate for next week. With that being said, I only have one agenda item for the board today, and that is the single entry point contract for 2021. I need approval from the board to go ahead and enter into this agreement so we can continue those services for our community.
Okay, that sounds like an action item.
It is.
I would entertain a motion from the commissioners to approve signing the single entry point contract.
Jody, I do have a question on that. I know that there were questions about the single entry point, if we were going to merge Alamosa. Is the contract, is the contract set up so if we do merge that we can alter the contract to fit that situation?
So, no, we cannot alter the contract, and Ryan can chime in if I say something wrong legally. The contract would be between Rio Grande County and the State of Colorado. But it does have a 30-day opt-out clause. And so if any circumstances change, we would end that contract, and then the state would choose to contract directly with Alamosa if that does, in light of COVID, as we all know, those conversations seized in March. And so, and with everything going on, Public Health does not have the capacity to even have these discussions at this time. So I would entertain that we enter it, so we don't have a lapse in service in our communities, and then continue to try and have those conversations with Alamosa County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, I would make that motion.
There are a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a section. Any other discussion or any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Jody, before you go, I have a question for you. Since you say that the long bill is in the House right now, do you have any sense of cuts that are going to affect the county?
So what we were being told, John, specifically for the Department of Human Services, is they are looking anywhere from a 10% to a 25% cut. I have not seen what is in that long bill yet to know if any specific programs. I know the counties were really pushing to keep our integral programs whole as much as possible. But once I see that information, I'll definitely make sure the board is aware. At this point in time, I, I just don't know. There's such a moving target. It's hard to answer that question. But it's anywhere from a 10% to 25% cut in some of these programs.
Right. And not directly related to your department. I know that you kind of monitor all these funding things. Have you heard of any other proposed cuts that would affect other county departments?
You know, from just my personal perspective, John, the only thing I think, you know, Rio Grande County is setting okay, given this really bad economic situation we've got going on in the state. I think some of the resort areas are being hit much harder with the lack of property taxes being paid and sales tax and all of that income. As you guys know, Rio Grande County does not have those income sources at this point. So I think for right now, we're probably in a calmer state than the rest of the state, but that is just my personal opinion.
Did you hear anything about proposed cuts to the Public Health Department?
I have not paid attention to Public Health.
Okay, thank you, Jody. I appreciate the information there. Jody, do you have anything else for the board?
I do not have anything for the board at this time.
Thank you. Hearing that, we'll move on to the Pest Control District and the Chemical Bids. Trish, is Armando on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Trish, would you take the lead on this? You've been working more closely with this.
I think Armando can actually explain them better than anybody. You guys should have the bids in front of you. I can do a share screen if you find that necessary. He did get three bids for the chemicals. Armando, honestly, you know about these particular chemicals. I'm going to go ahead and let you explain them.
The county's going to use the most, 240 dicamba, little bit of glyphosate, and a little bit of plateau, which is a lot, that's pretty complicated chemical, and stickers, and a little bit of vapor guard, so the vapors don't get away from us. Those are the main chemicals we're going after. That's pretty much what we'll use inside the roads and property owners. That's cool. That'll kill most of your broad leaves. That's, that's the, the bad weeds, I guess I call it. That we're going after.
Okay, Armando, this is John here. I understand there's a lot of controversy surrounding dicamba. Is there any issue for us using that chemical?
No, dicamba in the fields, it is. Yes, it does drift. Yes, I'm, my employees are in training right now for that. It's an excellent tool for weed control, especially your noxious weeds. They're extremely hard to kill sometimes. That's a powerful tool in killing weeds. And if I train these guys, hope, hopefully I'm training them right, where I teach them about the drift and don't shoot the chemicals everywhere. I think it's an excellent tool.
Thank you. So I don't have the bid in front of me right now. I took a glance at him, but I was busy with other things. The three bids you submitted, partly on price, partly on service and availability, what is your recommendation?
Oh, Co-op and DP Ag are awesome service people, but Mr. Don Henderson's been awesome trying, I mean, he's given me so many cheat sheets. He's, he's trained my guys yesterday and today. My board, my board and I talked about it, my weed board, and we kind of agreed that we should stay with DP Ag.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Um, what is the trade name on the dicamba?
We have, we have Rainstar, and then we have, hold on, let me get my, what we use, because I'm used to different brands.
Is it right?
Trade name on dicamba? Vanquish? That's the pure, the pure, that's what we use.
Okay, so that would be strut and vanquish?
Strut, and then we have dicamba? Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I don't know what the trade name, I mean, I worked for a different company before, so I'm trying to get used to this new trade names.
That's fine. I just went through and kind of made a little sheet from the bids. And my question was on the Duracore, which is what two of the companies bid on, and DP Ag bid on Milestone?
Yes, I can answer that. We've been, a lot of, there's a lot of controversy on this right now.
Okay, is the Milestone court from DP Ag was in quartz?
Yes, because is it illegal in the San Luis Valley? In two and a half's now, and you can't find two and a half's in the valley because of the labeling.
Okay, but whenever you multiply that out, and I'm not sure if that was a mistake or not, but whenever it's multiplied out, that's $341.40 per gallon, as opposed to the 96 and 101 from the other bidders. And so I'm not sure if maybe that was a mistake in the bid? Do you know? Armando, are you still there? Did we lose you? Oh, I think we lost him.
Okay, until we can hear back from Armando, would the commissioners be willing to defer that till later in the meetings while we get reconnected?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, we will, we will temporarily defer that till later in the meeting. And that takes us to open managers' update. Do we have any updates from the managers?
I do not see any other managers present.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the General Business Administrative Items. First item there is a Secure World School Fund Disbursement Conversation. This is an action item. Trish, would you, for the benefit of all on board, give a brief, brief explanation of what that money is?
I will. I do want to confirm that there is a member from each school here. There's a lot of people, so I just want to make sure first, because this conversation actually cannot happen unless one representative from every school is here. I did get confirmation from Sergeant and Montavista, but not from Del Norte.
So we don't have, do we have representatives from each school district?
That's what I was asking. So if you wouldn't mind unmuting and let us know if you're a representative from which, what school? Anyone?
Haven't even called my cell phone. Yeah.
Gene, I'm going to mute you for a quick second, or if you can.
Okay.
Doesn't appear anyone is here from the schools.
Then I would take a motion to table this until we can establish a firm meeting time with the schools, but contact them individually.
Certainly.
I would make.
Okay, we have a motion to table until we reach out to the schools and hear back from them. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, next item on this is the Jasper septic system variance discussion. Is Randy Kern on the Building Inspector?
Randy just got on. We do have Mr. David Slater. We're expecting a Stacy Davis. Like I said, a lot of people. Stacy, are you with us? Yes, Stacy's here. Hi. I also think Mr. David Hilton, I'm sorry, is also with us.
Okay. Yes, I'm here. David Hilton, yes.
Don't know who, with whom to start. I guess I'll start with our Building Inspector, Randy Kern. Can you give us a little bit of an update on what we're talking about here?
Can I ask, is there a representative from Mountain Engineering?
Frank was going to be on the call for us.
Yeah, this is Frank Black with Mountain Engineering.
Okay. Yeah, so basically, we've received a variance request on behalf of a couple of property owners in the Jasper community. I think the board has, has read the variance request letter, or have you had time to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, Mountain Engineering's proposed, basically, an alternative to a pressure-dosed sand filter soil treatment area based on several criteria. That's lack of the power, reliable electricity, the seasonal nature of the community, you know, given its remote location, and the, the very low amount of, of water that's, or wastewater that's generated by most of these residents, simply because a lot of them don't have wells. They end up having to haul water. And, you know, I've, I've reviewed the design. I've, I've discussed in detail with Rich Silkey from Mountain Engineering. And, you know, I think they have a good, they have a good idea here. You know, we, we sort of discussed, well, would this be a, I mean, would they propose a variance for each individual cabin as they came up, if they had that soil type that was found at the Davises and the Weddylands? Or would we try to come up with something that maybe serve community-wide, still knowing that, you know, each individual property will need to be evaluated at the time they want to install a septic system, you know, for groundwater and other, other physical features on the site, but, and to confirm, verify the soil type. But, so basically, that's what we're here to, I think the, the board's here to be asked is, is based on what was submitted by Mountain Engineering, the design here. Would you be open to granting the variance from Reg 43, from a pressure or siphon dose type system to a gravity system, still utilizing the sand filter? Actually, four, I noticed in the letter, four-foot sand filter versus a three. But I think Frank would be maybe the, the one to give us a little more insight there on the, on what they've come up with.
Thank you. Frank Locke, is that right?
Yes, yes. So I'm an engineer out of our Solida office here, and I've been working with Rich and the folks up in Jasper to kind of come up with an alternative plan. Right now, vaults are pretty much the only reliable system up there, which involves just a, a tank that all your septic water effluent goes into and it has to be pumped out of. There's no treatment of that effluent. Once it enters the vault, it's just a, a pit, basically, that collects all this, and then they have to have it pumped once it fills up. And then they have to have it pumped once it fills up, which is somewhat unreliable in and of itself. Um, yeah, if you don't stay on top of those systems, they can overflow. You can end up with a worse condition than what we're proposing, which is somewhat of a, you know, it's, it's, gravity systems are an approved system through Reg forty-three. Um, we've basically, the soil type that's present in Jasper doesn't allow for that. However, if you separate yourself from that soil type by four feet, hence the four foot of sand layer, then it does permit that system. So we've just increased the, the sand to four feet. And that, and in a sense, um, makes it approvable through Reg four-three. Uh, but that is somewhat of a, we would require a variance from you guys to make that happen. Um, but it's, it basically is in coordination with regulation forty-three for a gravity system. It would operate on its own. Um, residents wouldn't have to have a vault that would have to be pumped, you know, semi-annually. Um, you wouldn't need to use power. You know, a lot of these places are off-grid. You wouldn't need to use excessive amounts of water. Um, a lot of these places are off the well on cisterns. You know, just using what they bring up there. Um, so I think this proves to be a viable alternative to the pump systems, um, in that area.
I would, this is David Hilton. I would like to make a comment on the vault system as far as reliability. Um, a lot of those homeowners up there also have, you know, thousand gallon septic tanks and they're hauling their own water. And they have five hundred and fifty gallon cistern tanks. So you do, the owner does have to be responsible to know how much water they're using. Um, if you have a five hundred and fifty gallon cistern tank, you just need to make sure that you don't put two of those cistern tanks into that vault system before you get it pumped. So you can, there's a way to monitor your distribution to the vault system by having a cistern tank. So that's just a comment from me.
Thank you. Could you state your name again, please?
David Hilton.
David, thank you. Um, essentially coming out of the phone always hears your phone number, so, uh, you'll have to introduce yourself every time you want to talk. All right.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I see, uh, David Slater's unmuted. David, do you have comments on this?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I've had a graphic flow system up there for thirty-five years. I'm gonna pray that I don't have any problems by being honest here. But anyway, my comment on this is that, uh, we get our water tested pretty regularly there at my house. And I'm on a well. I have a, uh, septic system up above me, uh, which is, was put in in oh-four and it was inspected by, uh, the building inspector back in those days. And, uh, it's a hundred feet from my well and I've never had any contamination in that well whatsoever. Uh, so I guess what I'm saying is that ought to be proof enough that it's not getting into the groundwater up there. I don't know how many years it would take to get into the groundwater, but, uh, our, like I said, our systems that were working was working. And the new system, I just don't see how in the world we can keep, uh, them going either the cipher or the electric pump system in that area without the proper amenities to do so. So that would be my comment and, uh, wish you all well.
Thank you, David. Uh, Stacy Davis, are you on to comment about this?
I am. Um, I'm here with my husband, Justin. Um, I think this is a good thing for Jasper. One, we're not bringing the trucks in to, um, unload the tanks constantly. Um, it's better on our roads. I think for the long term of Jasper, um, and Jasper's community and how we utilize it, I think it's the best for the long term for Jasper.
I'd like to say also, for cost effectiveness of this, it makes more sense. Um, I mean, when you look at the home values, our cabin's only a twenty-four by twenty-four cabin. And the cost effect is to build our own septic system on this is gonna, is gonna be almost a third of what we've already, we're gonna pay for this and what the value actually is gonna be. I don't know that that makes sense for us to build our own system up there at this point. We probably have to go to a holding tank.
Okay, uh, running back over then to, uh, Randy Kern, the building inspector, do you have a comment or Frank, either one of you?
I don't really have, have a comment per se. I, I'm not opposed to the, the, uh, variance application. What I would say is that, um, you know, this is all happening really quick. We just got this this morning, basically. I just wonder if we could take the time to review this to make sure we've gone through the variance process properly. Maybe even review that with Ryan Dunn. I'm not sure, but, um, that's, that's basically the only comment I have. Otherwise, I, I, I'm not opposed to what they've come up with here.
Thank you, Randy. So if we were to table this until our next meeting on June third, would that give you enough time to review and have your recommendations?
John, this is Ryan. I'm not sure that it actually would, just because under Reg forty-three, before the county can approve the variance, they have to have variance procedures in place. I was corresponding with Cindy Hill, the clerk and recorder this morning. Uh, it's not clear to either Cindy or I that the county board of health, um, because as Randy pointed out to me, it is a board of health decision under Reg forty-three, but that the county board of health has ever actually adopted any variance approval procedures. Um, we do have a resolution by the board of county commissioners that pertain only to Alpine Village, which was essentially a moratorium on any waivers related to septic systems. Um, but I think if it, we need to adopt procedures in the interim, um, June third might be a good time to flag this and at least review whether we have those procedures in place. And if not, to potentially adopt procedures. But I don't believe you'd have the ability to actually approve a variance on or before June third without those procedures in place.
So as, as practical matter, uh, if it's required that the board of health adopt procedures, uh, how long does that process take?
The, the process would essentially be as quickly as they could be developed and approved in a public meeting. Um, and so if June third is the next board of health meeting, then, um, we could draft those up, proposed procedures, um, and have them in place. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that actually approving the variance, if in fact we don't have those, um, wouldn't be possible. What may happen, um, is that between Cindy and I, we're able to find something that shows that the board of health did in fact, uh, approve them. I think it's unlikely because, um, as you know, the board of health has kind of been a hodgepodge for the last five years or more. Um, and there's nothing prior to two thousand nine that I can see.
Okay, so, uh, out of consideration for the homeowners up in Jasper and their desire to get some, some certainty on what we have to do going forward.
And our limited timeframe to install.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
We understand, trust me, we understand those kinds of constraints and concerns, and we want to work quickly. Uh, but we have to make sure we follow all the proper procedures. So this isn't, we don't, don't make a mistake. Uh, so what I'm looking for here is advice, if anybody has it on, from the board of Hillside, how do we expedite this process? And then what does the variance process take in terms of public hearings and things of that nature if they're required? Do you have any idea, Ryan, on notification and all that?
Reg, Reg forty-three does basically say that once the variance procedures have been approved, uh, then it's up to the board of health to determine which variance requests require a public hearing. And so to set that for a public hearing, and I have navigated away from, uh, that authority, so I can't review it, but I want to say there was at least a twenty-day requirement for notification. But I can find out for you, um, in, once the hearing is set. So, sorry, I can find out for you and let you know, but that twenty days was once the hearing is set.
Okay, but we may or may not require public hearing. Is that correct?
The board's discretion to determine what types of variance requests, uh, require a hearing. So you could determine that this would be the type of variance request that actually wouldn't require a hearing.
So practically speaking, the first that we can act on this in any regard is June third. Can we have, uh, proposed variance procedure drafted by that time for our consideration?
If that's what you would like to put on my to-do list, I'm happy to get that done.
Well, uh, the other commissioners, have comments on that?
Uh, this is Dave Slater. Can I make another comment?
Yes, Dave.
Um, I would like to bring out the fact that I've dug all over Jasper one time or another. And it varies in soil, the rocks, the boulders, the whatever, all over the whole development. And I think that this variance is very important for the whole valley too, uh, to be put in place. Because there's so many different types of scenarios and soils, even down here in the valley. I mean, if you get up towards, uh, Crystal Creek, you get in the bedrock type stuff. And you get over here by my house, it's, uh, the water table's three foot under the ground while they're irrigating. I imagine John, if you was up at your house, it's probably a lot lower than that because you're climbing up the hill. So there's a lot and lots to consider here. Uh, and I think it's very important that this variance does get done, simply because there's so many issues involved with this.
Thank you, David. Uh, that being said, uh, to address the Jasper specific issue, uh, we may potentially have to narrow our focus to that right now, just so we can assist people in getting things done this season.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, Ryan, we understand we may have to revisit this if we start looking at other areas and come up with a blanket variance policy for this specific kind of issue. Uh, but for right now, would it be appropriate for us to adopt various procedures so we can address what's going on up the Alamosa Canyon?
Are you proposing to adopt variance procedures today?
No.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood your question. Uh, right now it would be appropriate to work on proposing variance procedures so that we can get this done as quickly as possible, yes.
Okay, so we would set that for June third. If, uh, but, uh, I don't have the authority to do that myself. The other commissioners, uh, would you weigh in on this?
I think that would be very appropriate.
Okay, and Gene?
Yes, I agree. I think that's the way to go with it.
Okay, then that's what we're gonna do. Ryan?
Other comment, John?
Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Um, you know, along with Reg forty-three, uh, during the adoption of that, the county had to also, um, adopt certain local appendixes, let's call them, to the regulation. And we do have a, a section in there titled variance procedure, but it's a very short, you know, four item um, kind of thing. So I, I, I think that if I can meet with Ryan possibly, uh, working on this variance procedure, um, we may already have the beginnings of it at least, or something that might work.
Perfect. Thank you, Randy.
So you two will do this. You'll have something for us by June third, or hopefully a little bit before so we can review it instead of doing it during the meeting.
Yeah, well, and should the, shouldn't, uh, the public health department be a big?
They should be part of that conversation, absolutely.
That's really what, um, what we're talking about here.
Sure. Your, your involvement is you're the inspector and you make sure that they comply with whatever the variance allows or the law allows.
Right.
As I understand it. And Ryan, if you don't mind taking the lead on this and bringing all the pieces together so you can bring us a proposal for June third?
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for Stacy and David, uh, does that help you?
Yes.
Yes, it does. I, I would like to keep, you know, in mind about how when people are bringing their own water, uh, this is David Hilton, uh, that, you know, keep in mind that people can monitor how much water they use as far as the size of the septic.
Yes, it's part of being a good citizen, taking responsibility for yourself.
We appreciate you guys taking the time to look into this.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, David Slater still on? Do you have any comments? Any further comments?
I'm, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no other comments on this particular item, uh, we will move on. With the understanding that on June third, we will revisit this after we get the, uh, proposals from the attorney in law. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excuse me, John.
Thank you.
You bet. Take care.
John, it sounds like Gene is able to get Armando on the phone to continue that conversation.
Okay, let's go back to that, um, what we're looking for on this. Armando, you're on the phone now, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Armando. So what we're looking for now, we're gonna go back to the chemical bids for the pest control department. And, uh, is there any other information that the commissioners would like to have from our director or supervisor?
I think before we, um, go completely with the bid from DP Ag, because this was the one that had a milestone quoted by courts, which makes it extremely, was if that was an active.
Okay, the milestone, uh, yes, it is quoted by the courts. That's the legal, uh, package size that we can use this year in the San Luis Valley.
Correct.
Application rate is seven ounces per acre. The Duracor that you were asking about, the application rate on it is twenty ounces per acre.
Okay.
The difference is that the price is that that, uh, and that's probably a lot of the reason is because you use a lot less milestone than you do Duracor on the, on the noxious weeds. The Duracor is also, uh, a combination herbicide's got another herbicide mixture in it. The active ingredient in milestone is at forty percent and on the Duracor, the thing, active ingredient is eight percent.
Okay, that answers my question then. And so.
We're ready to, uh, act on this.
Your recommendation was to go with DP Ag for everything?
Uh, uh, yes, but I still want to be friends with the Co-op. They're like the gardeners. They're very knowledgeable. I would like to purchase things from them too, to say a thank you. They're a very valuable resource to me also.
Then we've gone beyond just a straight bid to authorizing Armando to, uh, source his chemicals from more than one entity, if I hear that correctly.
And I did notice there were, um, LI seven hundred, which I think is kind of a, an alternative to Loctite that was, by the Co-op. And there was, there's a, I had never heard of it. Apparently it's like a water conditioner is, that wasn't bid on by anybody else. Is that something you requested or did they just throw that in?
They just threw that in there.
Okay.
Gene, you're, uh, our representative to the weed board. Do you have comments?
Uh, I, I think we ought to leave it up to Armando on the, on the stuff that he might be able to buy from Monavista Co-op if it's not something that's on the bid. But I think if we do the bid with AP, uh, I think we need to pretty much honor that bid as a complete bid.
Okay, uh.
Unless I misunderstood what was said.
I'm, I'm trying to get my head around. I'm trying to figure out how y'all formed the motion.
Well, I was asking questions. I'm not sure. Well, I was asking questions. I'm not sure there was a motion in there.
Yeah.
Not yet. That's what I'm waiting for.
Oh, okay. Well, I would make them, we approve the bid from DPA. In regards to, uh. The chemicals listed.
And then what about, uh, purchasing from other vendors?
And, uh, if other chemicals are necessary. Then give Armando the flexibility to buy them from other vendors.
Okay, so you've modified your original motion to, uh, provide Armando or weed, uh, district supervisor. To use his best judgment and purchasing things, purchasing items from other vendors as is appropriate. Uh, uh, that's a motion. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. Is that good enough, Armando? You good to go?
Uh, John, just, John was asking if that was okay with you.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, I don't think we have any other deferred items, so we can now move to the public health business. And the first item on there, and we're, uh, for those on that are listening in or watching. The Board of County Commissioners sets also as the Board of Health. And as such, uh, we don't have to adjourn one meeting and reconvene under the other auspices. So at this point, we are functioning as the Board of Health. And the first item, uh, under Public Health Business, not really under it, it was part of the general, uh, discussion. Was a vote to ratify the decision that was made on Friday. Uh, on the termination of Emily Brown. Uh, I'll open it up to the commissioners for discussion on that or for motion.
I do have a statement I would like to make. Um, there have been a lot of misunderstandings and misstatements regarding the management of Public Health Department. Friday afternoon, the Board of Health hired Paul Wertz as interim director. He's highly qualified medical professional. He's been on the front lines for the county response dealing with the crisis. He's already given the board vital information not previously provided. And we will be working closely for information and advice. The board has confidence Paul will give us good information, will restructure the department for maximum efficiency. And guide the board in making decisions going forward.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Jean, do you have comments?
Uh, no, I, I, I agree with Suzanne. I think that's the way we're gonna have to handle it. I am very confident in what Paul can do. Uh, being from the field, he's in everything, so I'm good with that.
Thank you, Jean. I know, uh, in the, in the discussions leading up to this decision. There was. My impression was as chairman that there was strong consensus that the decision was taken, uh, not lightly, very seriously. That there were several issues that led to that decision that we've not been able to disclose to the public. Um, and so that was the reason the vote was taken is I, or not the vote, but the consensus was there. And so our purpose now is to ratify that decision. If there are no other comments on this from the board. I will accept a motion or entertain a motion to ratify the decision that was made on Friday.
And I accept that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, but a motion and a second, a motion by Suzanne Bothell and seconded by Commissioner Jean Glover. Are, is there any other discussion or objections to this from the board? If not, uh, the motion carries from the Board of Health. Uh, Suzanne, you've made your comments. Jean, you also made your comments. To address the concerns from the various constituents that are on this particular call. Uh, I'm gonna reiterate that this decision was not taken lightly. It was made. Based on information that the board had. Deep concerns that the board had, and as we are beginning to have, uh, more. Visibility and to the function of the Public Health Department. Uh, we have even more concerns and. May end up having to do a full audit of that department over the last few years. Uh, we hope we don't have to go there. Hope we can. Uh, get the information we need. Uh. So we will be looking at that, but we do have some issues with grant compliance, uh, in the past. And we want to make sure that we have done things properly. Uh, and if not, if we haven't, that we get these problems or issues rectified and rectified quickly. We're gonna have challenges going forward. If the budget cuts we're hearing about are implemented at the state level. The county is going to face huge challenges in keeping that Public Health Department staffed at needed levels. And we're very concerned about that because we care deeply that we have a functional. Health department. It is very, very important to this county, and I want to emphasize that. We have listened to the comments, uh, most of the comments that I've received or concerns have been. Uh, respectful, express their concerns, and I appreciate those personally. Some of the comments we received have been. Somewhat inappropriate, in some cases profane. And I'm distressed whenever we get that, but we deal with it as they come. Uh, we're here to make the hard decisions. And, um. I want to offer our assurances that we are doing our very best to act in the best interest of the county. And that we are using the information provided to us by the subject matter experts when we make these decisions. So, uh. I'm, I'm gonna actually open this up, if I may, to some public comment on this, those that are on. If they would like to say something, hopefully, uh, keep your comments, uh. Non-offensive if you can, but we do want to hear what you have to say, so, uh. I see several people on here, uh, don't step on each other. Whoever wants to speak, unmute, and we will listen to what you have to say. Please identify yourself. When you begin to speak.
I have a question for you guys.
Yes, Laura.
Um, so the way I understood.
Identify yourself again.
Sorry, Laura Chelos, Monovista. So the way I understand it, just from what, what you told me, which is great, and then, um. And then what I read on the Rio Grande website, um, commissioner website or Board of Health website. Which I noticed was changed quite quickly on Tuesday without Emily's photo, so that was prompt, but, uh. Um, I did wonder, so, so I know back in February you guys had discussed. So at some point, the three communities were represented on the Board of Health. Is that correct for Rio Grande County? They each had a representative from Del Norte, South Fork, and Monovista.
If I could address that, Laura, and if, uh, Ryan or if anybody else wants to speak, as it turns out, our Board of Health. As we were starting to, uh, work through this, had not been constituted according to statute.
So, John, can I take it from here?
Please do.
All right, so Laura, thanks for your question, and I know this is confusing because. Apparently it was confusing for the county for the better part of ten years. Um, so that law changed back in two thousand eight, and so it basically. Disbanded all public health departments as they were known. And required that every county, or there could be contiguous counties that could form. Public health districts, but every county essentially established a public health agency. And so a public health agency is made up of a director, a public health board, and then the department, which are the staff members that work under the director. And so when the law changed, Rio Grande County formed the Rio Grande County Public Health Agency. And in the resolution creating the Rio Grande County Public Health Agency. Um, they appointed themselves as a Board of Health. In most cases, a Board of Health is gonna consist of at least five members. Um, except where you have a county of fewer than one hundred thousand people, which Rio Grande County obviously is. The Board of County Commissioners can appoint itself. So back in two thousand nine, the Board of County Commissioners appointed itself as the Board of Health. Right around that same time, the county entered into an inter. Uh, intergovernmental agreement with the three municipalities being Del Norte, South Fork, and Monovista. For representation on the Board of Health. Uh, it appears that they made a one-time appointment, they being the then Board of Health. One-time appointment of those, uh, municipal members. And, uh, under the statute and under the bylaws, those terms were to be for five years. Uh, according to Marty Asplin and Carol, who were also on, um, the Board of Health. Previously had been appointed to the Board of Health, their terms had never been renewed. We couldn't find any record that had ever been renewed. And in reviewing that IGA earlier this spring, there were a number of areas where the IGA was actually in conflict. And, uh, invalid as it related to the statute. So. We gave notice to the municipalities at that point in time of the, uh. Errors and of the county's intent to withdraw from that IGA, given that there hadn't been any, uh, validly appointed. Um, representation from the municipalities in a better part of five years. And so those people who were actually named on the county website back in February. As Board of Health members didn't have any lawful authority to act as a Board of Health. So. When I, I've been in this role for a little bit more than a year and.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, what was that?
What is your role?
I'm this county attorney, and I really should have introduced myself and explained that, so I apologize to everyone. Um, so I recognized that I didn't want the Board of Health. Not being able to contemplate any kind of circumstance like COVID nineteen, obviously, but didn't want the Board of Health to be in any kind of position. Where they were entering orders that were later deemed invalid because the, uh. Members had not been properly appointed. So that was the impetus behind the, uh, withdrawing from the IGA. And it's unfortunate, but you're right, that information should have been corrected on the Board of Health. Uh, sorry, the, not the Board of Health, but on the Public Health website, uh, more than two months ago. And I think it was your original email or maybe even a comment on Facebook. That brought to our attention that the Public Health Department had not updated their website.
Okay, excellent. And then my other question, I guess, would be because it seems like a responsible thing to do to have. The municipalities, especially given that there's only three, um, even though we don't have to be represented with our population, it seems like it's a really. I mean, not a bad idea. Um, so I would wonder if you know about other, um, counties or affiliated health. Um, agencies and what they do and, um, yeah, and I guess I would wonder why we didn't just make it legal. Again, instead of, you know, separating the, the municipality's representation from the Board of Health. Like, it seems like. The cities should be represented on the Board of Health.
So in nearly every surrounding county, um, with the exception of, uh, Mineral and Hinsdale. And they have, uh, the so-called thread Public Health District, um, every. As far as I know, every other Board of Health, at least Alamosa and Conales. Uh, and Costia are, I can't speak to Sowatch, but are, um, their. Board of Health representation is the same as the Board of County Commissioners, and there are a number of budgetary reasons. Um, why that's both necessary and appropriate for a small county. And if there's any additional input that a commissioner wants to offer, I'll defer to them, but that was, uh, part of the justification for doing so. Being a small county with limited resources, being able to provide that kind of oversight to the Board of Health.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, cuz I mean, I would never have noticed it if I didn't get upset about Emily's.
Yeah.
So then I dove into that. Um, yeah, and I guess I would just like to say, I'm still, you know, very, not to, this is not with you, Ryan, but. Um, yeah, that I'm just, again, upset about this firing, and I would, you know, we've had one representative from the health community on this. Um, I have, I do solar, I have nothing to do with health, but the one interaction I had with Emily, I was really pleased with, and. Um, it sounds like a lot of people were. I know these are divisive times. I know she signed off on the variance, you know, with. Pressure from the council, but I thought, you know, I'm for it. I mean, I like to keep people safe, but. Yeah, I'm still really quite upset and, and pretty suspicious actually about why the firing of Emily happened and. And I hope, I guess this does have to do with you, Ryan, is that, you know, I mean, hopefully due diligence was taken and, and maybe it was, but, um. I'd feel a lot better if there was some way of knowing that our public health community was in support of this dismissal.
Understood. And the only thing, I know that it appears that there's a delay on uploading some of those minutes. When those minutes get uploaded to the websites, I would encourage anyone who's interested to not only review the minutes. But also review the public health order, uh, directing the public health director to provide certain information to the Board of Health. Um, that was adopted on March thirtieth. Um, and so to anybody who's concerned that this may be a response to Facebook posts. Um, that have been circulating recently, I would just encourage you to go back, uh, when available to the record. Uh, even prior to March thirtieth, um, and that will shed some light on. Some of the conversations that have been held in a public forum that justify the board's decision.
Okay, thanks for that, Ryan.
Thank you, Laura, for your input.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, are, are any of the other people who are concerned with this that are online right now, are there comments or questions from you?
Um, I just wanted to, Eva Timberlake, I just wanted to put some rumors to rest, uh, Mr. Dunn. Is it true that the commissioners wanted HIPAA information, uh, HIPAA violation information? For example, maybe who was infected with COVID?
So, no, and you can, again, I will refer you back to that public health order, which should be, already be recorded. And it specifies the exact information that was necessary, uh, to the Board of Health. And just for reference, that same information is provided in Title twenty-five, uh, Article one, Part one. And, uh, it's found in twenty-five, one, one twenty-two, parant two, and it authorizes the Board of Health. Um, and any, um, public health agency employee with a need to know essentially. Right to receive information related to the investigation of diseases and conditions. Um, with or without patient consent. And so I don't want to get into a whole treatise of what constitutes HIPAA information. And what would constitute a HIPAA breach. The long and short of it is the public health agency in its, in, at the public health board. In its role in investigating, um, is not a covered entity under the federal statute. And it would be entitled to receive this information. They would not be able to share it with the public generally. Um, but they do have access to all information which is deemed pertinent, relevant, and necessary to the public health investigation. And so it's not that specific names or HIPAA information, even if that had been applicable to this situation was being requested. But there is certain information that wouldn't necessarily be for public consumption, that would need to be provided to a Board of Health. Um, that would be a record of the public health agency that frankly wasn't provided.
So what you're saying is possibly it could be a HIPAA violation?
No, that's not at all what I'm saying. It wouldn't.
That's what I heard.
Then if you heard that, I apologize. I wasn't more clear. What I'm saying right now is there is information that is obtainable. And should be shared with the Board of Health, um, that might not necessarily be for public consumption. But it wouldn't constitute a HIPAA violation. A HIPAA violation would only be to a covered entity, so. Um, a medical provider who provides care to somebody, um, might have an obligation or would have an obligation to maintain that information. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the County Public Health Agency would have access to that information. And be able to share that information, uh, with lawful sources, but it wouldn't be a HIPAA violation. Because they are not a covered entity. And like I said, I, I know this is not necessarily the time to get into that whole discussion about what is and what isn't HIPAA. That could be probably a two-day-long class. Um, but no, just for the record, it wouldn't be any information. And none of the information sought, uh, under that public health order that would have been provided to the board. Would have constituted any kind of HIPAA violation.
Thank you.
Uh, Eva, I noticed, this is John speaking, uh, just in the chat, uh, the question is, uh, were the discussions on all public meetings recorded? And did the commissioners abide by the sunshine law?
Yes.
I will refer that back to our. I will refer that back to our attorney. He advises us on that. So Ryan, could you address that particular question?
Sure, there are, and just so that there's clarification, there are no minutes from May 22nd and will be no minutes from May 22nd because that was an executive session and notice of the executive session was posted. So the law requires, as I'm sure most of you familiar with the sunshine law, know that anytime a quorum of the board is meeting, you have to give notice that they're going to be meeting. And so that notice was posted. But in terms of personnel matters and a board, whatever type of board, be it Board of County Commissioners, Board of Health, anytime they're dealing with a personnel matter and day-to-day supervision of employees directly under their supervision, it's not required to give notice, even though they did, and it's not required to have that in an open meeting. And there's very specific case law on point that essentially says that it would lead to an absurd result to allow for public input and participation for specific employee matters. And so reasonable minds can disagree with that, but that is the holding of the Court of Appeals. That was the advice that I gave to the Board of County Commissioners. And so in ratifying that decision today through a vote, that will result any issues with respect to the open meetings law, but from the discussions that were held on May 22nd, there are no minutes and there will be no minutes. There is, however, as required by law, an electronic recording of the session, which I maintain as a privileged communication on behalf of the county, as is required by statute.
Eva, does that help clarify that or answer your question?
Yes, the vote was today. So yeah, cloud rise a lot. Thanks.
Thank you, Eva. Are there other comments from other folks on the meeting right now?
Yes, my name is Audrey Rich Loy. I've been a resident of Rio Grande County for over two years and I live in the valley for nearly ten. My husband and I are small business owners. We have two businesses in Rio Grande County, and I just want it on the record that I'm completely shocked and concerned with the decision that you've made to terminate Emily Brown.
I don't know, I came in late.
I cannot imagine what possible justification that you have for letting her go during an international pandemic. And unfortunately, your timing and the public statements you've made today give reasons that appear less than transparent and lead to suspicions across our community. Ms. Brown has been instrumental in leading efforts towards the variants for Rio Grande County while balancing our economy and the health of our citizens. And we would not be where we are without her unique expertise and leadership. Truly, regardless of your decision, which is yours to make regarding your personnel, the bigger picture is that I'm afraid that your actions have only emboldened the vocal minority in our community. Even if you say your actions had nothing to do with the division among your, our community, you've sent a message that public employees can receive threats to their safety and still get away with it. It's incredibly scary to be a resident of Rio Grande County right now because of your actions. COVID-19 should not be a politicized topic. This is a time for leadership, science, and the ability to unite us. And this decision is only going to lead to the opposite. And finally, I just want to say that it's unacceptable that business, that your minutes have not been published in a couple of months. The fact that you're able to go into such depth regarding the Public Health Board, but we don't even have public minutes posted, just seems like pretty unprofessional and pretty unacceptable, especially given what's going on. And so if you want us to not have concerns about your transparency and decision-making, I suggest that you get your minutes posted as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Audrey. I'm gonna, this is John, I'm gonna speak again to the, or speak to the minutes issue. Part of our delay was, we have one clerk recorder who is from the County Clerk's Department. And due to people, we reduced the staffing in the departments because of the virus and we, we cut back as much as possible. We left it up to the various department heads to determine that. And as a result, there were delays in getting the minutes transcribed and through the approval process. And it's somewhat of a complicated process to even get the minutes finally approved and in final form to comport with state law and post it on the website. I, I personally agree with you. I would like to see the minutes out there in a more timely fashion, understanding there are some time, there are some time issues in getting that done, and it creates a bit of a lag in there. But we are working very diligently to make sure that our website is as current as possible and that the public has full access to those items. We're not doing anything to hide it. We're not trying to delay the posting of minutes so that things kind of fade from the public memory at all. We value public input naturally. We have to have fairly thick scans because we do get some criticism. And we understand people have opinions. But this board, of all the boards I've worked with in my time in the county, is deeply committed to making sure that we follow proper procedures and that our decisions are well considered and made for reasons sometimes that only we know. Unfortunately, that's just the way things work. But we aren't, we didn't do anything we feel may have jeopardized our response specifically to COVID. We, we are confident right now, to echo what I believe Commissioner Bothell said, that we have the people in place and that a solid team is in place to effectively deal with this pandemic as we go forward. We are going to be faced with having to make recommendations as to reopening the county. As you well know, there are many opinions on this. I can assure you that our decision was made without regard to pressure from the outside. In fact, I only became aware of a lot of the comments after we had made these decisions. This weekend, our emails blew up, we started hearing about different Facebook posts, different individuals that set up Facebook sites on, particularly on the reopen, the valley effort. And that, I was unaware of those comments until later this weekend after all of our decisions had already been made. And we were not influenced in any way by kind of those left or right, I don't mean left or right politically, I mean, left or right in terms of opinions on opening or not opening at all. If you'll notice, the governor's actually run ahead of the county a little bit on this. We had gotten approval for thirty percent capacity on restaurants specifically. And if you notice, the governor in his executive order issued this weekend, increased that capacity to fifty percent. And our county's position was we will go with the governor's recommendation on that with the understanding that if we have cause or there's an issue that develops, we can always issue more restrictive restrict, more, more restrictions if necessary, and will do so. So we are not responding to pressure from any side, but we are listening to all sides. But we are having to make this decision based on the best available science, best available medical information. And as you all know, the information and the guidelines coming from federal, state are all over the chart. The numbers are hard to get our, get, get our heads around because there's such a lag and the time that testing takes place until they're confirmed and those numbers are relayed back, that oftentimes we have found that when we see new case data, in fact, those individuals have already recovered and are now past their isolation period. So it's been very difficult to filter through that. And then part of our effort here is to make sure we have as near as possible real-time information so we can make coherent decisions. And I'll, that's my scree. Other comments on this? And this is from the public. If you have comments or the commissioners.
Would the county be willing to address some of the rumors that your variance decision influenced your decision regarding firing Emily Brown? I, were you influenced by the rumor that she was opposed to Rio Grande County applying for the variance? Or were you influenced by the spiking cases that would have threatened the variance's status before Governor Polis issued his executive order yesterday?
Chelsea, I'll take the opportunity to answer that. That's Chelsea Martinez. Who, who are you representing today, Chelsea?
Just as, just as a resident of the county. I live in Montevista.
Okay. The answer to both of your questions is no. Our decision, we, we, when we submitted our variance request, the blossom-up outbreak, if you want to call it that, within the ag processing community had not occurred yet, or we were not aware of it. But we had already developed our variance request and were submitting it at that time. So no, that was not in part of our decision-making process. We were very concerned because as it became apparent that we had an outbreak that occurred after we submitted our request, that in fact, that may cause the state to deny our request. But that had nothing to do with our decision one way or the other in terms of the Public Health Director. In terms of pressure or resistance, there was conversation and dialogue between the Public Health Department and the Board of Health and, and thus the county commissioners. Because county commissioners are the one that had to submit the application, not the Board of Health. On how best to approach that, we came to an accommodation on that and were satisfied with that. And so that also did not play into our decision. It was other factors that were quite frankly irrefutable at the point and demanded that we deal with the situation at that time.
And understand the minutes, we'll disclose those more when we can read them. The only other factor that I think has been made clear so far in this meeting was that there was a lack of grant compliance. Do you feel that the other factors that came forward in, or that will come forward in the minutes that we'll be able to read as the general public will be important enough to outweigh the pandemic concerns?
Well, part of this is almost, will be a legal question for our attorney. But in terms of the pandemic concerns, at this point, we feel that the leadership in the Public Health Department is very proficient in dealing with this and understands clearly the type of information that the Board of Health needs going forward on any decision that is made, whether it's to increase the restrictions or relax them. We're comfortable with that and that we will be getting more real-time, better real-time information from them. We're also in that process. We kind of unburdened the Public Health Department for the duration of this pandemic. From having to do a lot of, for lack of a better term, bean counting. And so we've assigned those duties to other people in the county working with, closely with the Public Health Department. And we are going to be listening to them going forward. We don't feel that, we feel that the change will be beneficial and will give us a better chance to deal with this crisis going forward. I'm personally, my concern is if we see a resurgence of this, say, later in the summer or fall, where we're having to visit this again, and we want to make sure we have a team in place that can respond quickly and, and effectively to that. I'm not sure if I've really addressed it. In terms of the minutes and things of that nature, some information may come out in the minutes. It may not, because if we're not really dealing with it at that time in terms of the details of the decision that's already made, of course, they will, that would not be reflected in the minutes. And we have to err on the side of caution that we don't violate any of the personal disclosure rules that we are constrained by. But we're trying to, we are making every effort to be as transparent. Obviously, today, we are listening to people who have concerns and trying to respond to them appropriately as best we can, including you, Chelsea. And if you have those concerns, we do appreciate it. So I, I'll stop with that because I'm not sure. I'm starting to ramble here, so I apologize.
Thank you. I think some people have some questions in the chat, kind of regarding more details on that. But thank you for answering my questions.
Yes, Chelsea. And if you have any others, feel free to contact us. Okay, I'm trying to read the chat and look at you at the same time, so Suzanne, please, yes.
I see that people are asking questions about whether or not these discussions were had with Emily. If we did anything about performance improvement plan or any discipline prior to the firing. And yes.
And I just want to, that's a succinct answer, but I just don't want to get into any specifics regarding that, just because Emily has a right to privacy. We haven't been authorized by Emily to release any information concerning her employment. So I just want to be very careful that we continue to respect and abide by privacy laws. I, I will just refer people back to that March 30th order, which was directed to the Public Health Director. And I guess from my perspective in consulting with other county attorneys from across the state, the order that was issued by the board related to information to be provided by the Public Health Director was somewhat unprecedented in that it hadn't, nobody had had to do that before. And so I, I really want to leave any specific information out regarding performance plans or corrective action. But I do want to say that, you know, that March 30th record speaks for itself. Thank you, Ryan.
I'm having trouble reading through all the comments. I'm on a small screen here. I apologize. Or any other questions? So this conversation's still open? Are there more questions or comments?
I guess I would just wonder, I suspect, I don't know if any of you can answer this, but I mean, if enough of us are concerned about this situation. And again, there are all those privacy issues and stuff for you and for Emily. But is there any recourse as public? I mean, I'm guessing, you know, there's always, somebody's got a problem with any decision that's made, and I understand that. But yeah, is there any recourse that would allow us to feel more confident in your decision-making about this? That we can like reach out to the state for, and they, I suspect they have the same ability to see, anyway, I don't know exactly what I'm saying, except that I'm, it'd be nice to know. It'd be nice to see, I wonder if this could be investigated, I guess, is basically what I'm asking. And how that we could go about that. And, and then if you guys are fine, that's great, but it's just such a suspicious time period, and I understand, Ryan, there's stuff back from March, but yeah, it's just, it's just, it's just really uncomfortable and unsettling to have this done, especially at this time period that it leaves me with no confidence in the council whatsoever, commissioners rather.
Laura, I would just encourage maybe at future Board of Health meetings where Paul is in attendance that, and anyone who does have those concerns might want to come and hear what Paul has to say about the issue. I will share with you, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn, because I worked closely with Emily for four months, that Friday afternoon was a hard day for me personally. I'm the county attorney, but I'm also a human, and I liked Emily. She was a nice person. And I do want to say that when the board had a meeting with Paul on Tuesday, there was approximately ten minutes worth of information that he provided that, speaking for myself personally, since I'm not an elected official, I felt a lot better about the information that he provided and the state of the county. And that it was more accurate and up-to-date information. And so one of the points that Chelsea made was a concern about, I don't know if Chelsea used the term bloom or blossom, and kind of having the variants revoked. I too thought we were a lot closer to that based on numbers. Paul informed us very quickly that circumstances had changed and just kind of pinpointed and highlighted the lag in testing and the lag of information as it was being relayed to the board. And so one of my concerns in advising the board from a legal perspective is putting out orders and preparing policies that are based on old information or information that just hasn't been provided. And so when the question is asked about whether it's, you know, HIPAA protected, some of the information that was thought was just basic information to let the board know how to make policies in the future. And I can only speculate as Board know how to make policies in the future. And I can only speculate as to why that information wasn't provided. Um, given that I think that there's going to be more communication now, I, at least my representation of the county, for whatever that's worth to anybody who's listening. Feel more comfortable that when the board enters orders from here on out, it'll be, will be more informed. Um, and more closely tailored to the needs of the county than they have been in the past. So that's, I know, nobody, most of you don't know who I am, and so my opinion may not matter, but I'm just. Letting you know that that was a a sense of relief that I personally felt uh having met with Paul yesterday.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Are there other comments? Are we uh, we're trying to be as transparent and forthcoming as we can be. This is a rare opportunity. Virginia, I see you just unmuted. Uh, Virginia Christensen?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Um. I'm just here to voice my support for Emily Brown. She was a great uh ethical employee, I feel like, for the Rio Grande County. Um, and for the good of the county, the Commissioners should be able to discuss and work through issues without having to fire individual department heads. At a rapid pace. I I was on the Commissioners' meeting uh last week when she was giving her report. And when uh you, John, asked for more information. And it did sound like you were asking for personal information on individuals. And I could see the reservation in her voice. So even though there's probably no right answer, I feel like. Uh, there should have been more communication and that more transparency in this communication should be. Available during the County Commissioners' meetings. I feel like there is a lot of uh. For lack of a better word, secret meetings going on. And I don't think that all of the meetings have to do with anything that's confidential. It's merely what the Commissioners do not want the public to hear. And there was also some discussion during that last meeting about what is confidential and what is not. And by the end of the meeting, after it went round and round in circles. I feel like the Commissioners were still confused as to what confidential information is. So with that being said, I just would think that in the future that the Commissioners. Would try to work more closely with their department heads and. For the good of the county, try to keep individuals that are good for the county. And work with them. So that, you know, because we have a limited resource of people in the valley to hire. And replacing good individuals is going to be very difficult. And I'm not talking about just this case, but in a lot of the cases where a lot of the department heads in the last couple of years. Have been replaced or have chosen to leave Rio Grande County. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Uh, no, there are no secret meetings. Um, there are no, I'm unaware of any personal or hidden agendas in any of this. Uh, we've maintained, at least my experience in working with the other Commissioners and with department heads and with staff. That uh, we do our best to make sure that our, that things are done openly and properly. One of the challenges we have in this particular instance is the COVID instance. Is setting as Board of Health and Board of County Commissioners in the open meetings, obviously, if there's uh privileges and information. That cannot be discussed at an open forum because it's privileged information. We're not allowed to disclose it. So at that point, functioning as the Board of Health. Uh, we are asking for more detailed information, more specific information. And we were having a very difficult time in getting that. And uh. So the the general public conversations were. Uh, basically done in a way to prevent disclosure of the restricted information. And then, of course, an executive session uh. Or and dealing, an executive session involving department heads and all. Uh, we discussed it, uh attempted to get that information, but the general. Message to to the staff and to the public was. The Board of Health is requesting specific information so they can make good decisions. And we were at that time having a difficult, it was difficult for us to get that information in the proper form. But we were not trying to hide anything or uh set anybody up. Um, period. And anytime there's a disruption in uh a government entity. Or employees leaving off for whatever reason, again, a lot of that has to do with uh. Issues that something cannot be disclosed to the public, um, because we're not allowed to disclose it. And we're hampered, and you you would well know this, all of you would, that uh. A person who leaves the employment of a government entity can say anything they want out there in the public. And the government entity is constrained by what they can say in response. And we find ourselves in a defensive position without uh being able to respond. Openly about this stuff simply because it's inappropriate. But uh, my assurance may not mean a lot to you. Uh, many of you don't know me. Uh, but I will offer my personal assurances that every decision this board has made. In terms of employment of people in the county, has been made. Considered, looking at all the circumstances, and we've made every effort in every case to try to work with the employees. To make sure that they had an opportunity to speak to us, uh tell us what's going on. And uh, we, if there was a corrective issue that we had to deal with, we tried to do that as gently as possible. And if we couldn't resolve it, then we were left quite virtually with no choice. And I know there's a lot of concern out there about the Commissioners acting somewhat arbitrarily. And again, my personal assurance is is that does not happen.
But I just know that at the last Commissioners' meeting that I was at, when you were discussing things with her. There was no indication to the public. That there was really necessary information being left out. It just sounded like you wanted more personal information.
Okay, I'm sorry if that's the way it came across, Virginia, and I can understand how that perception is out there. Uh, it was a general, the the attempt was in a general way to say we needed more information. The information being provided to us oftentimes was so nonspecific that we really couldn't. Use that in in coherent decision-making. And in many times, it was less specific than we were getting from other sources. Uh, there are several entities and agencies involved in dealing with this pandemic at the regional level. As well as at the uh Department Operations Center. And there was information out available to them that was being withheld from the board. And uh, it was information that was appropriate for the board to have. In fact, it was necessary for the board to have. And so uh, we were somewhat frustrated in our attempts to uh do our part. And responding to the pandemic and protect the public, but also uh to. All the other considerations, like opening up uh church capacity, restaurant capacity, what have you, didn't matter, there were details out there. And we were just uh a little bit hamstrung in our process, and we were trying to get that corrected, and we were not successful.
Okay, so John, one other question. So what professionals did you talk to in this process?
Well, some of that I cannot disclose, just to say we were getting input from people who are involved at the IOC level, the regional level. And uh, and so there was, we we received quite a bit of input from that. I'm I'm not at liberty to say who said what to whom. But it was all part of the fact, it all factored in to uh what we had, what we felt we had to do there at the end. Uh, I don't, I don't mean to be dismissive, Virginia. Your your concerns are valid.
So you didn't talk to any medical people in the community, local medical professionals?
I can't say that we didn't talk to them. We didn't, I didn't talk to anybody on the specific decision. Uh, that was something that would have been inappropriate, but we had had input from people in the medical community. About concerns they had. Uh, were they concerns about that one individual's performance? I cannot say that. It was specifically that, but general concerns about the whole approach to the problem. Probably a politician's answer, and I apologize. Does that help at all, Virginia? You, you, you're, yeah, there.
I have, I have no, no more comments.
Okay, thank you. Are there others while we're here?
You mentioned the Public Health um Department will be kind of be structuring resources in a different way. Can you provide any comment of what changes those will be? Or any guidance that you're giving towards that?
Uh, specifically, Chelsea, um, we have two public health nurses. And when they make initial contact and are trying to get information on a possible case or a confirmed case. They have to talk to hospitals, to the victims, and to those right around the victims to try to find out. The nature of the outbreak and and uh, and if in fact, it's a confirmed case and what have you. It's required that we use medical professionals for that, but afterwards, after that initial information is gathered. And then they do follow on contact with those individuals to see how things are going. Uh, symptoms, things of that nature. Uh, have they been to any parties, uh been out in the public or have people at the house? Those kinds of questions are not necessarily privileged. It could be. Asked by anybody. And what we found was that up to between forty and fifty percent of the public health nurses' time. Was being taken up with these follow-up calls. It could have been done by any staff member in the Public Health Department. And that had not been dealt with. And we were hearing that there was a staffing shortage. We needed help. The the request for help was nonspecific. We couldn't find out what help, what the help meant, uh what they want help to do. But in conversations with the Public Health Department after Emily left, I, the question was asked. Can we free up your time? Uh, to the public health nurses so you can more effectively deal with the outbreak. Understand at that time, we had this confusion. And I hate to call it confusion, but I guess that's the best word for it right now, because the problem that emerged in center. Was in both counties. So we had people living in one county, working in the other, the point of uh infection and all was unclear which county it was in. And we're required to deal with Rio Grande County and Swatch required to deal with Swatch County, but there was an overlap there. And so our public health nurses were finding themselves kind of dealing with a broad area. And it was just overloading them. And it was, it was a rapid flare up. The diagnoses came in just kind of all at once. And so they were overloaded, but they were spending half of their time doing things that wasn't essential for them to do. We could have had somebody else doing it. And so when we hired uh Paul Wertz, who's highly, I mean, he's a medical professional, he's an MSN. A registered nurse and an MSN. Uh, we asked him, what could we do? To more efficiently use our, the Public Health Department's time to utilize it to deal with this response. And we authorized him to restructure the department so that he could reallocate. Duties to people as appropriate in his department. And we let that decision up to him. It's going to free up time. It may become a moot point if this is the last flare up we have where we have multiple cases simultaneously. It may become less of a burden, but right now we were functioning that way. And what we told them was there are less urgent public health functions. Uh, give you an example, tobacco cessation. Which is kind of an ongoing program within the Public Health Department. It may not be the most urgent thing right now, and while we're not going to neglect it. We're going to focus right now on this pandemic and that the public health, our directive to Paul Wertz was focus on the pandemic. And if we have to use other county departments, specifically our financial department and administrative department. To assist them to pick up some of the burden on this, we will do so. All he has to do is tell us what he needs. And I rambled again. I may have gotten off point. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any others? Well, I mean, if you want to throw rocks at us, now's the time to do it. We're here. You've got us in the room.
This is Audrey. I've written this in the chat a few times, and it hasn't been addressed. I think I'm just still confused. So. It sounds like the meeting that occurred that was public that Virginia referenced. Um, Emily gave a report out of information to you all. And it sounds like, John, you were um wanting additional information that Emily's report did not include. Can you be specific on what you wanted to know that Emily's report did not include? Since that was a public meeting, I would think that that. Answer should be public as well.
Okay, now that inform, that question or request of Emily. Could have covered items that would be confidential and would not necessarily have been disclosed in that meeting, but in that meeting, what I was attempting to do. Was to ask Emily to provide in proper format and proper meetings, more detailed information. Uh, some of the information that was, is public and and should have been made available to us. Was not only how many cases we had in the county, but how many active cases at that moment we were dealing with. And how many had already recovered. And we were not able to get that information. We were getting aggregate numbers. We may have gotten some snippets of information. I can't recall exactly. But in general speaking, we could not find, how many active cases do we have? And of these latest numbers that just came in of confirmed. Cases, how many of them have already completed their isolation period and recovered from the disease? And we were not getting that. So we were sitting there thinking whenever the outbreak occurred in the potato warehouses. That we had up to sixteen to eighteen cases active in the county. Well, that turned out not to be the case, but uh, we were very concerned because we're talking to the, or making application to the state or maybe. Uh, do we go forward with more relaxed standards or are we bumping up against the threshold? Because in our variance. We had certain trigger points that if we exceeded certain numbers in different categories, that variance would be revoked. And so we were sitting there assuming that we were close to having that revocation, which would have been very disruptive for the county. It's confusing. Because if a restaurant opens up today only to find out that we're back into uh more restrictive conditions, they have to shut down tomorrow. We didn't want to lead them down that path. As it turns out, the numbers we were getting was giving us. A false impression of what the actual situation was in the county.
So and John, if I can just supplement that, some of the additional information that the board sought um was. Still consistent, and I'm sorry to sound like a broken record, with the uh information that was enumerated. In that Public Health Order and referred her back to the Public Health Order. And to the extent that any information. Uh, that was sought would be considered uh private as opposed to public. Uh, Virginia, you'll recall that I suggested a means by which she could confidentially relay that and report that to the Board of Health. In its sole discretion um to review that information as opposed to copying me, copying the county administrator. Um, so we suggested mechanisms by which that information could be conveyed. Um, and maintain any level of privacy that would be necessary for those records.
Thank you, Ryan. I don't know if Virginia's still on. I can't tell from my screen.
Sorry, I was addressing Virginia, but maybe she isn't on. I'm sorry.
I'm still on, and I just, what I'm getting at is that I don't feel like that is being conveyed in public meetings. By the Commissioners and possibly not to Emily. But mainly not in public meetings, the concerns.
I I apologize for that. I don't know how it could have been made more clear. I think I was actually the one leading the discussion. Um, I believe that would have been the meeting on May nineteenth, and I think I took the lead with respect to that particular issue just. Uh, to hearken back to that specific information. And so if it wasn't clear to the the public. I do believe it was clear to Emily based on follow-up conversations that I had, and I I won't get into any privileged conversation that I had with any employee. But I do believe it was clear to her.
Okay, go ahead.
Like there was a question posed earlier by, I think Laura, that, you know, if if we as. Members of Rio Grande County who elect our officials have concerns based on this meeting. What is our next option? If we feel like there's something that doesn't feel quite right, do we have additional options?
Now, I'm going to defer to Ryan a little bit. I think that Laura referred to the potential for some sort of investigation. Is that what you're referring to, Audrey?
I am.
Okay, uh. I don't know, Ryan, uh, if you would weigh in on that, it's something that we had not, that I have not heard discussed or considered.
Um, Audrey, I just. If I can have you restate your question, I'm not sure. I think you were asking about what additional recourse public would have with respect to a board decision? Is that, just so I understand correctly, is that what you were asking?
Yeah, if if after today, we continue to have concerns of how this issue was handled. What are our next options? What options do we have as citizens who elect our public officials and who are residents of Rio Grande County?
Um, well, you obviously have the option.
Besides voting.
Right, okay, so uh, you answered, already answered the obvious question. In terms of recourse about the decision itself. Any department head uh of a county under Title Thirty, and in this particular case, it's under Title Twenty-five because. It's a Board of Health decision, but any public health director or department head serves at the pleasure of the board, whether that be the Board of County Commissioners. Or um, the Board of Health. And so. There may not be any actual recourse um, that you could take with respects to. The personnel decision, which is in the sole purview of the board, what, sitting in whatever capacity they are. Uh, if there are concerns about uh. Secrecy in meetings, then, you know, I would obviously echo the sentiments that John had, has already conveyed is. That at least when I'm in attendance, there are no secret meetings. Um, and I have no indication to believe that the county officials are meeting secretly, but uh. You can review the minutes to the extent that um, any records are. Um, you know, I think there was a question on there, on the chat earlier, whether the. Recording of the executive session is subject to subpoena. So there are certain avenues under. The sunshine law which would allow access to those records, but I will tell you that they are fairly limited. Um, again, just to protect privacy. So you would have to establish in a court somehow that you believed that decisions outside the scope of. In this particular case, Emily's employment were being discussed in that personnel's uh, executive session. Um, and then that's the only way that some of those electronic records are discoverable. Um, I'm not sure if that really answers your question. Um, I. Don't want to make the commissioners unhappy with me, but I mean, really, your recourse in a situation like this, when you're unhappy with. The decision of an elected body is to um, take that displeasure out at the polls.
Ryan, uh, we have a question that came up on the chat. Uh, it doesn't say who it's from, someone I had. Can a grand jury investigation be requested?
That would be a question for the district attorney's office if they felt that there were grounds to pursue something criminal.
Okay, I'm trying to see if there are any other questions. Uh, here's one from Eva. I heard one of the commissioners said Emily was fired for insubordination. Isn't that a violation of privacy?
Yeah, I just, again, I wouldn't get into any specifics other than what is already in the public record.
Okay, let's see here. Well, my capacity here, I think that we've answered most of those questions. If any of the people feel like the question hasn't been answered, uh. We're taking some liberties here because I want to make sure that everybody. Has their concerns addressed whether, to the best of our abilities. Is there anything, any other comments out there?
John, this was Virginia.
Yes, Virginia.
I just wanted to clarify uh, for everybody and for Ryan, that the. Conversation I was talking about was at the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting on um. May thirteenth. So it was not the discussion that was led by Ryan.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you were referring to the nineteenth. Sorry, Virginia.
Sure.
Thank you, Virginia. And I, I can't address the May thirteenth meeting. I don't have those minutes in front of me, and so. Uh, I couldn't speak specifically to that. Are there any other questions or comments? If there are none, um, we'll move on if that's okay. Yes.
Uh, I believe that those questions and comments were, and and someone correct me if I missed the procedural step, but I believe those questions and comments. Uh, were precedent to a vote to ratify, correct?
They were proceed, they were proceeded by the vote to ratify, yes.
Okay.
Is that the que, I'm sorry, is that the question?
We already had our vote.
Okay, okay. I may have missed that and I apologize.
Um, right. I, Audrey posted a question to everyone. Would this be a place to take our, oh, the governor, Colorado Gov, specific. Whatever their complaints, would this be a place to take their concerns? Um. I don't want to step on Ryan's legal toes there, but uh, citizens have the right to raise their complaints to any forum that's available to them. And uh, we have. No inclination nor do we have any authority to say, no, you can't. So that's, that's up to you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to clarify, was that vote to ratify Emily's firing unanimous and. Just to clarify, that vote is being taken after she was fired.
Uh, to answer one, I'm going to defer part of that to Ryan, but uh, the first part is, the motion was made by Commissioner Bothell. And seconded by Commissioner Glover. It is my practice to not vote on issues where we have a motion to second unless there are objections. Uh, I vote in tie votes only. If I need to vote, I step down as chairman. And take my position as a commissioner, defer to the vice commissioner and uh, uh, vote in that instance. So uh, unanimous in the sense that we had two commissioners motion in second with no objections, therefore the vote, uh, the motion carried. Uh, Ryan can speak to the other one about the ratification portion of that.
Sure, um, so Virginia, the current state of the law is that when it comes to decisions related to those types of day-to-day supervision. Uh, and personnel matters, it's not actually necessary to reconvene in a regular session and record a vote. It was my advice to the board, if hopefully they don't mind me sharing that, but it was my advice to the board. Um, that they do so and they entertain this public discussion because of uh, the obvious public concern. And the input that the public was wanting to provide. Um, and so this particular vote and ratification. Um, is for the transparency that people have discussed and to give people an opportunity uh, to express in this public forum. Um, and hear some of the justification that obviously couldn't be provided uh, prior to Friday's meeting.
Virginia, does that help answer your question?
Um, thank you.
Okay. Uh, are there others? If, uh, let me see, another question. Okay, from Laura, everybody. I guess everybody can see that chat. If anyone wants to contact her, Laura put her email on there. Okay, um. That being said, uh, and I, and I see your comments. You're also even, I understand your concern. Boy, we're piling in here. Okay, I just seek context. Um, if there are no others, at that point.